It's 6:01 September 4th. This is our bi-monthly selectmen's meeting. I'd like to open the meeting. Select persons present is Chair Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, and Mike Gould. Employees present, Michelle Nichols. And Aunt Blockler. No public present. I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, open session.
Yeah, I would, on behalf of the fire department, just let everybody know that the air packs that were voted on and approved at town meeting will be here tomorrow and put into service. So everybody knows that that has happened. The department will be using them after tomorrow afternoon.
Very good. Any other open session items? Moving on to item three, signing the minutes.
You're gonna have the minutes. She's still working on getting caught up before she leaves. So at the next meeting, the 18th, I think is your next one, we'll do all the minutes and get them caught up for you.
And we've all read the minutes.
I think she's got one more that she's gonna send to you, I think.
Okay. Moving on to item four, review of the treasurer's warrants. A payroll and B accounts payable.
Yep, 58 and 59. You don't have this one. That is the latest application printed out for you. You got yours the other day. That's the one that came in the mail.
You sent it though.
Yeah, I sent it by email, but then I printed it out for you just to have.
When does the clerk come in actually? I asked you, I forgot.
Say that again.
Clerk, when's that application process end?
That ends on the 13th. Although, we've only gotten one application. So we might need to put it in the newspaper again, extend out that timeframe. I did not check M&amp;A. It's supposed to, Sam was supposed to put it up on M&amp;A website. So that I have not double-checked, but maybe we should, if we extend it out, put it on there too.
It's odd that we have two contractors, one for cemeteries and one for other things. We have two different lawn contractors.
And I don't really know how that came about or where it started or...
You would think if you had all your eggs in one basket, you'd have more negotiating power.
You would think. I don't know, maybe it was too big a job? I mean, there's seven cemeteries, right?
I think that the guy, is his name PJ?
Yeah, PJ.
I don't think he wanted to do the...
The ball field.
And so I think that's why I guess separated. But his price, I think, was always pretty hard to beat on the cemeteries.
I just thought it was horrible. I thought that last time.
Yeah, I have to really stop and think who does what. You're also supposed to have Lance here tonight, but no one was there to call and remind him, so I'm not sure.
I'll give him a reminder as we speak.
He's probably out there reminding his new garage.
Is it a lot?
I'd be doing, I'd be sitting there every night, wondering how much it's gonna be trash in the year, every month. No, maybe not trash, but full.
Oh, yeah, full, that's not hard to do.
I had reminded Lance and he must have forgotten.
That's, nope, we only had two.
You through it Josh?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to item six, old business. First one is East Sangerville update.
Okay, so we're trying to coordinate a conference call with you guys with the lawyer. She had a meeting today, so today didn't work. I've put an email back out for the 18th. Obviously, next week you guys are gonna be busy because you've got interviews right back-to-back from 3 o'clock on. So she wasn't there to answer my email today. So I will know Friday if that's a confirmation.
This is about the...
The government land.
Down there, notes.
I keep thinking that's South Sangerville, but probably where the land is is technically East Sangerville.
Well, it's probably South Sangerville.
It's pretty close to me.
Really?
To the woods. And the curb laws.
On top of that, I know that there was some discussion because Lance, the legal fees for the Troy Nesbit, we just, there's a bill actually on this warrant. I don't know if you noticed.
I do.
It's like $196, so that will bring Redmond and Winchell up to date as far as the Nesbit case goes. The other case, I'm not sure. I think we're all up to date on the government land also, as far as bills.
All right, moving on. Item B, Eagle Technologies coming on Friday to get computers up and running.
Yes, so they have jumped, like, right as soon as they got the signed contract after your last meeting, they're busy putting packages together and making sure that we have emails. And they're gonna come assess it and start putting the equipment up on Friday. So they'll be there at 8:30 if anyone wants to stop in, you know, to speak to them or check and see what they're doing. They said they'd probably be there at least until 2:00 or 2:30, depending on what they see when they get there. Because this group of people hasn't been to the office yet. They also, and Josh, you weren't here, but I got an email earlier. They're gonna have a girl by the name of Brenda contact us concerning the website. Because they were talking back and forth with me, and I'm like, "I don't know passwords, I don't know what we use, I don't, there's nothing here." And she's like, "Well, what about your website?" And I'm like, "I got nothing, I don't know." So she's, they have somebody that might help us design a website. But on top of that, it goes along with the security. And by keeping it all in one spot, they can like monitor that stuff.
Yeah, I hope that'd be great. Moving on, Lance is not here, so we'll move to item D, an update on the Vance-Lambert project, the mowing.
So Vance was told by Jeff not to do the Nova side of the road.
By Jeff Libby.
Jeff Libby, yes, sorry. That's what he told me. I'm gonna tend to believe it because he did go the whole way. You know, the Isla Road was not in his contract. I don't know how it went, but he sent me a picture of his contract and it's not in his contract.
Yep, yep.
It's like on our roads, do we get listed?
Oh, yeah.
So that does surprise me. So that's gotta be put on there.
So I told him that, he was, he really wanted to come back and do both. And I told him it's not in your contract and that we did not expect anything. You know, we were, other than that, happy with what was done.
So he's completed his contract with us?
Yes, and I think we should release his payment.
Okay, so I'll leave a note for Sam tomorrow.
So let's make a motion. Josh makes a motion that we release his payment and pay him for the work that he's done. And vote. How much longer, so he's got, does he have another year on his, on our contract with him, or is he...
He's got two more years, 25 and 26. Yep, Patrick signed a three-year contract with him.
Now, do we have the ability to titrate that so this, so that, like with the line road and with...
I would think you'd be able to go back and...
I think he's based on so much a mile. I see it says in his contract X amount of miles. So I think we could, that shouldn't be a problem, it would just, I mean, we'd have to...
Right, I mean, you've got holding board. I would think you could go back and talk to him and...
Make the changes.
Yep.
He's been more than accommodating, talking to him on the phone anyway, you know.
Did we resolve everybody's issue as far as citizens go? There were some issues out on the Burrows Road and that's all behind us. Everybody's happy?
Yeah, I think so. There was one, what, a week ago, we called in about a few of the lambs. And I went out there and I found two that were actually in the road. But I don't know if they're eating what's left in the ditch. Went out to go back and...
Is that part of his contract? I mean, cleaning up or is this strictly mowing?
I don't think picking up the brush was part of the contract because I think you and I have done it before.
And Michelle and I have had a lot of these talks that our contracts are very, very big. Even, I mean, snow plowing, everything.
You've noticed that?
Yeah, and, I mean, I don't wanna be a complete stickler, but I think in some ways we do need to take it upon.
Those complaints are ridiculous, that.
Right, yep.
Well, I need to relook, you know, you have fresh eyes. So, you know, it, I think it helps having new people look at it, especially people who have done contracts before, to be able to say, "Well, this really should say this," or something.
I know they generate, you know, and it needs their own contract, which tends to be big. But some of that stuff that we're dealing with, the brush and cleans it.
Well, and you don't have a raker. So you can't give somebody that project of, "Why don't you go out and, you know, do this or do that?"
I don't know if it's a means of writing it a little bit more or just to clean up some of it or whatever.
Yeah, well, I guess the rake in the town garage is ours, according to Chris, that's ours. And I was thinking about hooking onto that if it was that bad and just going out, you know, letting it dump into the ditch and at least pushing it off. But it was just a couple, and I just got out and chucked them off and, you know.
I believe Rick Dobson lives out there. He said that he had moved a lot of it.
He did, yeah, I talked to him about it.
He has a big brush pile. He asked if we would burn, and I think a lot of it was that.
Yep.
So I don't know if he took all of it.
He cleaned up most of his side of the road.
So I did reach out to that Nick Mayhew. He was the one that came and did the DEP inspection on the landfill. And I just wanted to know if we needed to contact him when it was taken care of. And he said that he's gonna come and check it out. He didn't say when, he didn't say anything. I do have his phone number. So does anyone want to touch base with him, or do you want me to Friday?
You go ahead.
Okay.
Does he, is somebody else's sign off on or like...
Well, that's what I was asking was, like, do you, do you have to see what we've done? Do you, you know, do I have to notify you when it's all taken care of? And he said he'd just come out and check it out. But I didn't think the call Sam did. So I will touch base with him. And in fact, probably I'll take the phone number and call him tomorrow from our break at class time.
Okay, then we'll skip the, the update from Lance Johnson. We'll table it. If he shows, we'll revisit it. If he doesn't, we'll reschedule it.
I did hear, I haven't been out by the house, but I did hear that it is being cleaned up.
Heard, I drove by it today.
Did you really?
And it is cleaned up. There's still stuff out there, but it's, oh, it's, it's 500 times better than it was. There's a few big things parked on the lawn, but, there's a few big things parked on my lawn. But all the trash and clutter and all of it's gone. I was really hoping for Lance's update on it so that we could all be on the same page. As to where we go from here. So we'll just have to wait for that from Lance.
So if, if he's cleaning out the house side, is he working on cleaning up the other side too?
To me, the other side looked better than it did before.
Because I knew that they had to be separate.
Lance is on his way down here in a second.
Oh, okay, well, good.
So we'll, we'll circle back to that here in a minute. We'll move on to item seven, new business. I had something brought to my attention this week, just throwing it out there for everybody's thought. In the town of Sangerville, if you build something, you file a notice to improve, and that's it. If it's in shoreland zone, in shoreland, then you have to apply for a building permit and it has to meet criteria. Here is one of the problems, here's a problem that I see with it that was brought to my attention. The planning board is the one that writes those permits for shoreland, shoreland zone. They always had access to maps, indeed, all the stuff that's in the town office. They had a key and they had access so they could go in and use that information while writing a permit. They no longer have access. So they're moving forward, writing permits without access to the maps.
Lot maps?
Lot maps around the lakes.
There's two sets of maps in our office. One sits right near my desk, which is the assessing maps. But directly across from me in the cubby hole, right beside the server, is a whole set of maps that look like they're in color. And Sammy said that that's what Lance does, uses them for.
Right, and Lance doesn't have anything to do with shoreland permits on the planning board. The planning board does.
But I would think, because he did before, until this year. So I'm thinking those are the maps maybe they're looking for.
Right.
And as far as deeds, I have the latest deeds right in the office.
And my understanding is we don't do anything with property dispute or actual, you know, getting into the deeds or any of that. But the concern is, my concern, and I don't know where we stand as a town. So let's, let's make an example. If this guy applies for a building permit and nobody looks at a, at a map, a lot map, and we write him a permit and he builds a structure and it's over the line onto somebody else's, where do we stand as a town from that somebody else who got violated by having a building problem?
Well, that goes back to the assessor.
That's correct.
Who is reading those deeds and is drawing on those maps. I don't know as it comes down to us, responsibility.
Right, that's what I'm getting, I asked Lance and I talked to my father on the plan board. My concern is we haven't been there yet. But I think that it's important, I think it's important that we don't open ourselves up to even having to deal with that. Like when we write a permit through the planning board for shoreland zone, if we take the lot map and we go out and measure where they wanna put it, just so we have an idea that we're within the lot confinement. We don't do lot disputes, we don't do any of that as a town. But my fear is, and this is just me throwing this out for everybody to think about.
Well, I'm gonna stir you hot in just a second.
I know, you do.
Go ahead.
So my concern is if we can do more than we're doing to make sure that doesn't happen, why would we not do that?
Well, you're gonna have to have a little bit of trust there that the person who owns the property knows where the lines are. But why are we only doing a building permit for shoreland? Why are we not doing a building for, like, my house, if I put a deck on, how are you gonna know if I'm not on Mrs. Brown's property? All you have to file is a notice. You don't have to file a, burn a building permit.
Code enforcement does not deal with property line disputes.
No, we're not talking about, cool.
Well, she said, I just heard her say, "I don't wanna build on so-and-so."
No, we're talking about why does the building that I have only need a building notice?
Exactly.
And not a permit?
But then I heard you say, "If I put a deck on, you wouldn't know if I was building on Mrs. Brown's..."
Right, because we were just talking about Jeff said...
That isn't part of any of the permitting, it's not part of my job at all. If you do, that's a legal dispute between you and your neighbor.
No, well, the idea was the permit.
Right, in Parkman, they want a permit for...
Yeah, you only have a building notice down here versus a permit. So you don't know like what size it's gonna be, I mean, there's nothing.
That's part of our land use laws that we're wide open, that people have the freedom to do what they want, as long as it's not shoreland, as long as it's not something terrible related to...
We're talking about shoreland, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, shoreland.
But my point is, why are we worried, if we're not worried about all the rest of citizens and their lines, why are we only worried about shoreland?
Because the state enforces shoreland and we enforce other ones.
We have to do the state, and we actually, shoreland, we do state requirements plus, we're a little heavier. You can't be less, you can be more.
Right.
And we, our stipulations are more on the setbacks.
And is there a fee attached to any of this?
Just what's on the 10,000 thing, which I forgot, we were at the planning board, I meant to talk to you, we need to somehow redesign the planning, the permit application. Because where it says the first 10,000, the ordinance says up to the first 10,000 is $10. The permit says the first 10,000 is $10. So it looks like, oh, I'm not spending 10,000, I don't have to pay $10. We just wanted to change it to up to.
Okay.
But we don't have a master. The whole thing's gonna have to be rejected.
That's not a good deal.
Yes.
I've done that one before. That's similar to what Guilford had.
But like in Parkman, it's the same permit for, like, shoreland housing, because we have setbacks from the road in Parkman. Sangerville has no setbacks from roads, no setbacks from property lines.
So does shoreland have setbacks from property lines in Sangerville?
No, nope. They have setbacks from the shoreline from the...
But the state, but the state has setbacks from property lines?
Not in shoreland.
That would solve part of your question. If we, if we implemented setbacks, then you would know that you weren't gonna be on somebody else's land.
Parkman has 75 feet from the shoreline of the road and 10 feet from, from all property lines.
And the reality is...
In shoreland, we don't, we, I see, I see your head spinning.
Well, I know for a fact that they have something because my, we had to do 30-foot setbacks on my parents' camp in Blanchard, which is a township, and that's controlled. That's controlled by the state.
Yeah, state does.
And they have, we had to keep 30 feet off both lines, that's why that camp is there.
Yeah, that must be something, that must be something special, special from Blanchard. We don't, we don't have it.
Well, it's a township, right?
Right.
And a township is controlled by the state.
But it still goes by state, state rules.
They may have enacted something different there, I don't know. But I know what I've learned, we don't have it for state in Sangerville.
Well, and why...
I'm actually going to shoreland class coming around, shoreland and flood zone class.
But state doesn't come out and check either. They never came, you gave them...
In townships, in townships, you've been allowed a little lot. That's why up in Greenville, there's areas on Moosehead that are townships, right? So the only one watching them is the state. State doesn't have any ordinance against houseboats. So we have houseboats, Airbnb houseboats floating right in Moosehead Lake as of right now. And that can happen here.
We need to, we need to...
We've mulled it over in the planning, I'm not part of the planning board anymore. I just told them, I said, "It's really something you should look into." And I just talked to the state about it, and you can't say, you can't make ordinance decisions. No houseboats, even though Rangel did, and the state told me they'll probably get sued over. But you can make like a mooring ordinance, you know, no mooring, you know, so far away from the shore for over a certain length of time. You gotta get around it that way. And I can't go after it as a septic point of view. Because if it's on the water, it has to be, if it's registered as a war craft, then it's fishing game, it's on my hands. So there's a lot of, which you gotta get through.
What we were talking about is, is, all I wanted to make sure is that the planning board had access to the map and lots for shoreland as they work through some of the stuff because they're all in the old building. Planning board used to have a key to get in, and Michelle says there's a set of maps in the town office.
You mean this regular map over in the town office?
That's, I mean, we have those maps, but there was another set of maps over in the corner, I think, by the server. Sam said you used to use them.
Oh, yeah, those are resource-protected maps. They're supposed to be open to the public.
Okay.
They're maps for, they're resource protection for degree of slope, for waterfowl, for aquatic plant. There's a bunch of different reasons. And these maps give you highlighted areas around the water, why you can't work here or build here.
Okay, so that's not something they would use for the purpose...
Absolutely, they could. They're supposed to be accessible to the public in the old town hall. They had, they were in the room we used for the planning board and support use. They were, they had their own little, they were hanging. You could flip through them. Those are the ones that are in the corner, and I have a hard time, I pull them out, they're all rolled up, and they take up half the floor, and there's a special hanger for them. And they're supposed to be accessible to the public.
Oh, okay, well, we can take them out.
And that's all, all we're confirming is that all of these maps are accessible to the planning board at any time so that as they work through shoreland stuff, they, like resource protection. If they don't know where the resource-protected area is on the map, how would they...
And they can be tricky.
How would they write a permit if they don't have access to that information?
I use it for somebody else cut down a tree. Sorry, it's resource protected, can't, can't do anything about it.
So those are available, that was my question, is were they available openly to the planning board?
Like down in the coal, you know? I know there's resource protection down there for aquatic plant and waterfowl, things like that. You can't build, you wouldn't wanna do it.
I can't pull a plane out and chop up one more.
Oops, I just run right over that. So I guess, I guess there's two ways we could do it. Because Halen makes our maps, our assessing maps. So they can easily, it's easy enough to get them their own set of maps.
Hamless doesn't make the resource protection map.
No, but the regular assessing maps, the map that shows the rocks. Yeah, so I can get them a set of those with no problem.
Yeah, we used to have those on the table at every meeting. They were set there, ready for us.
That's why I brought this up. I was talking to my father about it, and he said that as far as he knew, there wasn't access to the maps like they used to have after we moved out of the town hall. So I wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure that they were accessible.
I have a set in my truck. I can take the old ones, like, when the year's over and you get some, I grab the old ones, I keep one in my truck, I want to park them a little time.
Yeah, as I say, I can, I can get them a set of maps.
Well, that's kind of a lot of...
As far as the big one though, the water ones that are in the corner, if I know that they're gonna need them, they can just come pick them up and use them for a night or whatever.
I don't think they were aware that they were in the new town office. They thought they were still in the old one.
Oh, 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 okay.
And their peers are...
They're kind of both, yeah.
They are kind of...
They're kind of hard to do unless they're in that damn hangar.
Yeah, just have them come see me.
I just wanted to make sure they were available so they had that information as they write permits. I just wanted to make sure they were available, so they had that information as they write permits.
Yep, and the other thing I can do for them is I can print off a list that is per map. So they can look exactly. Like the map with a reference. So I can do that.
Okay, moving on, any other new business?
Oh, all right, I didn't, I was telling you, it's got to six thirty.
Six.
You said six thirty.
Six? I can tell you six thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're okay.
All right.
So, any other new business, anybody has? Any, any concerns people have brought to you guys?
Trash at the boat landing.
Which one?
Senate pond. I got a call about that.
Trash, trash at the boat landing?
Yeah. I was, I was being aware of, and they asked me to present it to you folks.
So what do we do with that, how do we correct it?
I think, I think if you put a trash can up, everybody's just gonna empty their vehicle.
Right, no, I'd rather invest in a camera than a trash can myself.
Yeah.
Just, we're not responsible for hauling trash from the boat landing.
Well, and that was the problem, so everyone was putting their household trash in the trash cans.
Right.
So Jeff is like, and Nick came in, he complained, he's like, you know, what am I gonna do with all this? I don't have time to mess with this all the time, so Jeff said, well, we'll take the trash cans out of there. And make it a carry on carry out, and I even believe he got signs, I don't know if they ever got up or not.
So this is a ball field?
Yep, and then we had complaints because we didn't have trash cans to put trash in.
Well, there's nobody, there's no budget for it, there's nobody to do it.
Right.
So Troy always picked it up when he mowed, and we used to have a dumpster behind the town garage, I guess, and he would dump it in there.
I think we still do have a dumpster up at the town garage.
Okay, that would explain why I saw trash trucks just going behind the town garage today.
That's what we use for here, it's not an actual dumpster, it's just a wooden built dumpster with a lid that locks.
Oh, okay.
Like a metal one.
Oh, okay.
There's a wooden built like trash receptacle there, it has a combination lock, you just open it, throw trash in, and they pick it up.
Okay, that's how I move back to the.
That goes back to the. Now I'm gonna have lost words again. We, uh.
Yeah, that's the tidying up of the contracts.
Yeah, the, the contract for that needs to stay weed whacking, mowing, picking up the trash, putting it to the, you know, let's kinda all. Once.
So is that what we think we ought to do to address that is, is for next season, address the contracts? To include that?
Yeah.
Cuz this, was this even the first time it was put up to bid, I believe?
I think not.
Troy always did it, and then all second boat.
Yeah, but I think it was always up to bid.
Yeah, I just think Troy was a little bit up.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, once we got rid of the public works, cuz we mowed it when we had public works.
So do we need a motion on that, or we're just gonna make notes to, to address our contracts for next?
Well, I would think that you're gonna be working on contracts, cuz your season's coming to an end, so you're gonna need to bid them out again. So, I don't know when you wanna do that.
So we have the contracts? When those, when those contracts will come out?
Patrick was doing all of that when I came to work last first of October. He had just done the contracts for the mowing.
I think all of our bid, so anything that's gonna go to contract that way through bids, I think all of our bids should be ready to go. And they should state in every bid, you've got trash, you've got this, you've got that, and them should be ready to go firstly here. Everything, road work, that we don't know what we're gonna do the following year, everything is out of the first.
Does the mowing for twenty twenty-five go on the twenty twenty-four budget, or is it, you know what I mean, when, when does it have to come out?
You want the bids out, but obviously before you need them, you're gonna advertise and things, but you, you're gonna be working on your budget. October, November, cuz your year ends December thirty-first.
Information by then.
Right, so you need to start pulling that stuff together.
So as a board, we're, we're going to be visiting all of our bid forms?
Yep.
Okay, so we need to, we need to make notation that when we visit that one, we need to include trash pickup in the bid. And, and maybe even in the signage, we got. Every year we got some budget for signs, and maybe just the smiling on camera, just.
Right. So they aren't bringing down six pack, trash bags full of their home goods.
Right. It just might deter some of the needlework that's done at the boat landing.
Right.
Hopefully that's not gonna happen.
We had an, we had an incident this week, um, well. Matt had a group of people cleaning up the park, getting ready for our community day. And they worked for a few hours and were standing there, and two cars came in. And pulled on the e-brake and blowing donuts right in the parking lot they just cleaned up. In front of them.
That, and, and she kept it right on the rev limit so she couldn't hear you while her.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I mean, there was six of us or so, I think, right around there, just standing there talking, getting ready to leave for the night. It completely surprised me, cuz they didn't care that we were there or nothing, ripping donuts.
I think they hated it because you were there.
Yeah, so.
Give them an audience.
I went to speak with them, just let them know that it wasn't an appropriate place or time or any of that, that we just spent three hours cleaning up. And while I did that, one of them just sat there and revved the engine so she couldn't hear me, and, oh, okay, so.
Fortunately, there was a video taken, which was shipped to Guy Dow. Guy Dow made a move, I don't, I haven't heard what he did, how it played out. We're not, we're not interested in having that on our, on our town property, in case anybody's wondering.
Speaking of Senate pond, while we're on that subject, did you see those text messages I sent you of? Some reason I went home and found it that night, but this must.
The deed, the deed.
This must be it too.
Um, Mr. McDonahue brought that in and left that with Sam.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, so Bruce sent those to me too.
Yeah.
And I've, I've read them, and I. That, that land was cut off the piece of land that my father owns, and my whole life I've been pretty involved with that boat landing, kinda knew. What was going on, and that's something we gotta visit in the future, we can go down and look at it.
Yeah, I was, I, yes, this week's been busy, but I just think people need to know that we own twenty-four feet. That's what we own.
Right.
So if you can't park and let people buy in that twenty-four feet, you shouldn't be parking down there. Any trash, any trash that's down there is obviously gonna blow more than twenty-four feet, so it's gonna be on somebody else's property, you know. Respect would go a long way in that.
I guess it was one person picking up all the trash and spending their own money on garbage bags, and they decided that not up to anymore.
I don't blame them.
No, I don't either. But trash cans are not the answer.
No, I don't think so either, instead, I'd rather invest in cameras than trash cans.
Yeah, we picked up the ones down. That, and dirty diapers and vomit bags, and it's not a pleasant experience.
At a playground where the kids play and play baseball.
Yeah, but don't.
That's a problem with our boat landing, there's no party. There really is.
Sorry, we didn't, but as a town, we're not.
It's a tough one to back in.
That's what I'm saying, I've done it.
No, yeah. I thought I was pretty good back in sales, I got down on that, it took me three digs, people watching.
All right, any other new business, anybody's got?
Need to bring it back to, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to the table, item C, uh, item six. Item C, uh, an update from Lance on the Troy Nesbit ordeal.
Well, we had a court date, I can't remember the day, it was last week, once they was Thursday, last week. I get there and I met with the lawyers, and we were sitting, and Troy showed up to stop Troy and mow me, so we grabbed Troy and brought him in. He had the agreement in his hand that you, as a select board, had seen previous. And okay, I believe it was, uh, if you sign here, um. You got ninety days to clean it up, pay twenty to thirty thousand in that area. And if you don't, then the town can come in and clean it up, does that sound familiar?
I'll look about it, it must've been part of me.
I think it was, I think it was.
It was, it was sent to him and we never got a response on it, so we were at the courthouse, saw Troy in the hallway, so I had two lawyers with me. So we brought Troy in, seemed to have showed up and kind of felt him out, and he was, he was, he was willing to talk about it. He first thing said he didn't agree with anybody coming on his property, and he can't pay any fines because he doesn't have any money. He was notably heated, and then he went on to say his property is clean. I went by his property, it's eight o'clock the night before court, just to make sure everything was what it was. He showed me pictures on his phone of it completely cleaned up, front yard cleaned, graded, everything. Said he stayed up all night and cleaned it. And I said, well, I, I can't go by pictures on phone, I said, really Troy, I kinda aggravated it. If you really did clean it up, it took this to get it done. So what we did is we went in to see the judge and talked with the judge, they said they, the lawyers. We all talked and came up with, you know, go back to court in thirty days. With a new agreement, and the agreement has to be what you folks agree on, I told the lawyers, I was gonna run it through select board. They wanted me to call somebody that day, I said, no, I'm gonna meet select board and board. And see what they come up with, so in thirty days, I gotta come back, re-inspect his property. And bring some sort of agreement to Troy, and if he signs that, we'll go through with it, if he doesn't, it'll be whatever the judge. Comes up with.
And this is just for the house side of Route twenty-three?
Technically, yes, I told Troy, if we don't take care of all of it, we're gonna be right back here again. So he seemed willing to do both properties, whatever it takes. But he wasn't, he didn't seem agreement to any financial liability, which is gonna be a problem.
So where do we stand with the lawyers and the judge on the.
Approximately financially, approximately the town is about eight thousand in. That's real money, that's lawyer paid money. The first agreement included all the fines that can lead, lead up to this, and it, you know, if you wanna go by that. You know, one hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars per violation, it works up to twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Which is, you know, is what it is, I've referred a couple of cases that I saw happen in Maine where it's kinda similar. And the landowner didn't agree to the lawyer fees, and the judge. Granted the lawyer fees plus a fifty thousand dollar fine, so it can get pretty heavy.
If it's handled by the judge.
If it's handled by the judge, which is rolling the dice, I don't know if.
So is this out of our hands now, and it's going to be handled by the judge?
No, the, we came up with revisit the thirty days, what does the town really need from Troy? For an agreement, and an agreement would be without the judge, agreement is, this is what going, you sign this, this is what's gonna be done, okay?
Yeah.
So, the town, we have, we got money in it, so I don't know what the, you know, as a board, you'd like to come up with for an agreement for Troy.
So right now, the town of Sangerville has invested approximately eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars.
In raw cost.
In raw costs, lawyer fees, we have no agreement at this moment with Troy. So what we need is an agreement as what you need financially, and what do you need done. So this was last week, so we got another three and a half weeks before we'll be back in court.
How long have we been in this?
With Troy?
Yes.
When I took over, the big start was across the road with, uh, whatever his name was, and then Troy got involved with it. That file started in two thousand and two. And the Troy problem, his side of the property, I started two and a half years ago. And it had already been a couple of five years in.
Do you know when we gave that ninety day?
That was given to, I, I don't have that information on me, it's in my book. That was sent by the lawyer, I kinda had to prompt him a little bit to get them all rolling. But it was sent, and there was no response before our court date last week, so that was thirty days before our court date, so. Take Thursday of last week and add thirty days to it, and that's when he was received it.
Now, there was a previous court date that he didn't show at.
Yes, he said he was totally unaware of it, and that was the initial arraignment, uh, are you guilty or not, that type of thing.
Yep.
It was just me and the lawyer, Troy didn't show, and I asked the lawyer at the time, I said, does this. Are you gonna do anything to Troy, he goes, no, it just means that you agree that you're guilty. So I'm not super familiar with the court part, but my attorney will more familiar with it.
I can pull some of the bills, might give some, uh, notations on the bills.
And you can look at Troy, I, Troy's father in the office has all of the, anything that's ever been sent to him, those pictures in there.
Who, so who served him, I mean, the, the court day, the attorneys?
The attorneys, they're, they're the ones that served him, and they had the ones that were there, cuz. It got handed off to a very young lawyer, a very new lawyer, and, uh, this time, one of the senior lawyers came with it. And, uh, him and Troy didn't really see eye to eye, and it was a little rough later second, but. He's the one that went and said, we need to go talk to the judge, you know, Troy was there with us. Judge didn't ask me or Troy or anything, I was just the, the court enforcement, the representative of the town, and that's where they. Quite, the, the judge thought it sounded good to do another thirty days, he and Troy was sort of agreeable to work with.
He had made forward motion.
Yeah, the agreement that was sent, when he didn't agree with, but he was agreeing to work with something. So it looked to me like he thought maybe he could get out of it with zero fines. So if he doesn't agree with this, it's gonna go to the judge, and I don't know if he really wants to roll those dice.
It doesn't sound like it's gonna be beneficial to him, so. The biggest part of it is, number one, getting it cleaned up, and then number two, keeping it cleaned up.
I have not gone by his property, I wanted to meet you guys first.
I went by it today.
Is it clean?
Pretty good, there's some snowmobiles and some, there's still quite a bit of stuff around, but it doesn't look like.
The ordinance doesn't, the ordinance doesn't speak well of snowmobiles, and I've tried to keep this ordinance away from vehicles as well.
Right.
You know, I didn't wanna go as far as the state junkyard.
It looks a hundred times better than it did, it, it drives, you can see the front of the house and everything.
It, it, I told Troy, I was very upset that it took this to make that happen.
Basically, he's done twenty-four hours.
He did it overnight.
Two and a half years.
Could've done this a long time ago.
So. If this goes in front of a judge, the judge is probably gonna rule something similar to what you found in previous case law.
I believe, knowing the history, the judge will order the lawyer fees to be paid, plus some sort of fine.
Right. As a board, at this point right now. If we made the decision that it's cleaned up, what are our options, what do, what do we do? It doesn't have to go back in front of a judge?
If you wanna kill it, you can kill it, but I talked to the lawyers, and I said, I think the town is most likely gonna wanna. Have you draw up an agreement, send it to Troy, or present it to Troy, I could present it to him. Stating something like, we want the lawyer fees, and you can do a payment plan, there's something along that lines. Uh, and we'll waive fines as long as.
Correct.
It stays that way, the minute it doesn't.
The fines will be reinstated.
We're gonna come up.
It, it's gonna be in his best interest to make an agreement before a judge.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, I don't.
You, you know, you know what's gonna happen if you roll the dice, and who, what judge are you gonna have? Has a judge been in this situation before, and he knows how this plays out, is it a new judge, it, it all depends.
My view of it is, we're not out to crucify Troy with much fines and all that, that isn't the point, and that's the point in this is. What he's done with his property has affected the value of his neighbors' properties, and it's not fair to them, and it's. The ball's in our court to correct that for the people that live around him.
Exactly, we have an ordinance for that.
We have an ordinance so that we can. I would, I would personally rather see him responsible for the cost incurred. And. An agreement written up with the, with the total of what the fines are. Take it to that point so we know what the fines are, and then write up an agreement, a contracted agreement with him stating that. We will waive the fines as long as it's clean, the minute it's not.
It's gonna, it's gonna cost money to have the lawyers. It's gonna, it's gonna cost money to have the lawyers write up an agreement, but it needs to be legal.
Right here, eight thousand plus that.
Yeah.
Well, and this is set in a precedent.
It's, cause whatever we knew here is gonna be played out again.
I know, I now know the ordinance has teeth. It's been, it's been in front of the judge, it wasn't, it, it passed easy.
Right.
So we now know that the, the ordinance itself will stand up in court.
So are we, are we at the point to make a decision on this or do we, does it have to go to thirty days and?
I've got, I've, I've, we already have court date for thirty days. So I can speak with the lawyers, ask them if, if that's something, I already, I already asked them if that's something they can draw up, draw up quick. Give them, I'll present it myself.
Right. Now, that would be put in front of the judge?
Yes.
In lieu of the judge?
We will go, actually, we will make, if, if he agrees to the agreement on that day or previous, we still have a court date that day. And they set aside, they allotted certain, the other day, they allotted two hours for us, we only used fifteen minutes of it. You know, we apologized to the judge, but Troy was willing to work. So if we get that agreement and he signs it, well, that day of court, the lawyers will talk with the judge and say, you agree to do this and that. If he doesn't agree with it, the judge will look at the agreement and he didn't agree with this and he'll make his own-
And the judge may still say-
His judge can say whatever the judge wants to say.
Right, the judge may still say, you know, you're fined fifty thousand dollars.
If he fines him fifty thousand dollars, he owes the town, the town of Sandville fifty thousand dollars. The town then can decide how to collect it or collect it at all or however.
I think the multiple-
Might, might probably have more his career in-
Well, it is, it is-
Court ordered.
It is that way. I mean, it still might be a process of getting it, you know, on top of all that and we still have to go through a process, but in most cases, it's better off to do the agreement versus leaving to the judge that had as much as he-
You're rolling the dice.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And this is not about creating revenue, this is about-
No, this is about facing a problem only without trying to destroy somebody's life financially.
That's correct.
Have nothing to do with money.
I don't wanna see Troy go through fifty thousand dollars worth of fines. What I wanna see Troy do is be a good neighbor.
I wanna see Troy-
But this being ongoing at, at his fixing rate.
I wanna see Troy baby ordinance like everyone else has to.
That's correct. So we've gotta just let that play out in front of the judge thirty days from now and then from there, once that happens, we're gonna make a decision.
So is, is the, is the board in agreement that, uh, will wanna make some sort of contract that says, uh, pay the lawyer fees and keep it clean or else we enact the fines?
If there's no fines levied, then we don't have that leverage for future use.
Fines can be levied.
Will that agreement come to the board for their review before you take it to Troy?
I know we already have a court date for thirty days as of last Thursday.
Okay.
So I've gotta speak with the lawyers and see how this plays out. I'm, I'm not that in tune with, you know, the rules as far as how many days it has to be this and that. Does it have to be signed by the town or is it just, you know? I would think it would be, I think it was something you folks would have to review before, you know, it hits court, you know?
I think the most important outcome to it, I don't wanna see Troy's life turned upside down and ruined. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna see his neighbors going through what they're going through.
This has been my goal all along, ever since they took over, I started working with Troy a little bit of time. I come back every month, I wanna see a little improvement, a little improvement, a little, we were making headway. And then the, after about my first year, the current select board told me I wasn't obeying the ordinance.
The previous select board?
Yeah, yeah, it's current select board, if that's on. I'm in, you know, worked forward, I wasn't obeying the ordinance. I did do thirty days and I let, dragged out all really that was, so this is why we're here.
What are you, what are you guys' thoughts? I mean, I, I think the biggest thing is, we've got, we've got costs that gotta be covered, unfortunately. But the biggest deal is moving forward, having leverage to enforce keeping it clean.
The only thing I'm afraid of is, is eight thousand dollars enough to make him keep it clean for?
Well, if he's, if he's got fines levied against him, then we make a decision to waive the fines as long as it's clean. And when it's not, we reinstate the fines. I don't know if we can do that, I don't know publicly.
We can, I want the lawyers to draw it up and, you know, if he agrees with it, he agrees with it.
Maybe we should talk to the lawyer before the thirty days and just get a course of action that gives us leverage to keep it clean.
Well, when's your next meeting?
They meet every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday?
They meet every Wednesday six o'clock.
I'll talk to the lawyers and see if I can get him on speakerphone next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, we can't make decisions.
Next Wednesday you can anyway, because you've got interviews from three to seven.
Okay, well, I'm gonna talk to myself and then I'll, I'll, uh, get back with somebody else.
They'll, they'll know what we can put in for the language and, and then we can-
Cause I already asked them, I said, is this something you can draw up? I said, is this, is there something you can draw up where it says, you know, you gotta pay lawyer fees and if stuff doesn't say the way it's supposed to be, then you're gonna get hit with all of it? He goes, yeah, yeah, something you can do.
Is there any reason that the lawyer or you or somebody can't just email them and do an email review?
Yeah, I could probably, I could probably.
You know? I mean, that way you not gonna stall and waste those thirty days waiting for everybody to get there.
No, no, I'm gonna be on this tomorrow.
So, but if, if the lawyer could email then, an, an agreement or you-
Right on, yep.
So that they can see it.
I'll, I'll, I'll open that communication line.
My fear with this whole thing is if we waive the fines and we get the eight thousand or whatever, whatever the cost, it'll end up being, it's all done. Is a year from now, right in the same boat again and through this, I, I think-
I waste, I waste a lot of travel expense on Troy's property.
I know.
That was, that was another question I had, is how much do we have in you?
Yeah.
We're gonna need that total, so as you think through it.
Yeah.
So should I be doing some research on, on the costs that I can come up with through the books?
It's not gonna be an accurate number, you know, I have to think what, what it costs to go to Troy's and back one time and then try to figure through my notes, how many times I've been there. So I usually take case notes, something like Troy's where I've been there, when I'm done, I, I have a notebook, I write in it. Uh, you know, what the date was, went here, talked about this, you know, blah, blah, blah. Just my own case notes, which I have actually full copied, they're all handwritten, the lawyer has those from, from last year.
Well, it's unfortunate, it's all had to come this far.
It didn't have, it, it's not for lack of warning.
You're saying they have to go that far?
No.
I was, I was pretty upset. He touched the waters himself.
Pretty upset when he showed me those pictures. I mean, that, you know, could've done this a couple of years back and we wouldn't be here. Apparently he didn't take me serious, I guess, I don't know.
And then the other piece of this is he owns a piece across the street and that's not included in what we're doing here, that's a totally different response.
Legally, legally, no, and Troy knows that and I made him totally aware of it. If the, across the street doesn't happen, then we can, we can be right back here in two months.
So my question for you is, as you speak to the lawyer about this, can we include all Troy's pieces of property in the language?
I'll ask him.
The question on that piece is, I think there's two people listed on that deed.
Is there a, is there a lien on that property?
No.
There's, there's your key to getting your money back.
Oh, if, if we have refusal to pay the legal costs, then you can lien on the-
There's no lien on that.
On the own piece of-
Not yet.
On the deed with him.
Mr. Firth died, there was another guy, yeah, Firth, Firth passed away and somehow Troy got on there, but there's another guy that's-
Before Firth passed away, he put Troy on the deed with him.
Yep.
And when he passed away, Troy was the sole person left on the deeds. Apparently, a family member, uh, had a lawyer write up a deed and, and register it, that's a registry deeds. Apparently you can do that without even being an owner of property.
I'll double check the deed, I've got the deeds in the office.
Troy Firth was one of them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Really? I just think as we move forward and talk to the lawyer, the, the biggest thing is, it's, we've set precedence, the ordinance does have teeth. And we also need to set the precedent that it has follow-through.
There's, there's legit, whatever the word is, I don't have a blank, but there, you know, there's legit payments for not following the ordinance.
Yeah.
The outcome is-
There's, it's not fair for the people of Sandville to take this out of their tax money and pay it.
No, no. It's not, it's not you or I that, that Troy owes money to, it's the town.
It's the rest, the collective group and-
Yeah, we spent tax money on lawyers.
That's right. Restitution, you know?
Yeah. It's real money, that has to be paid. Fines, those are, you know, they're not as hard-like as, as lawyer fees.
But we may end up in the end of this with the judge saying no.
If Troy doesn't agree, he's gonna leave it to the judge and that could be a very bad outcome.
If Troy agrees, this, this does not come in front of a judge, if, if-
I think if Troy agrees, it's still presented to the judge.
Right. So that, that's still a wild card.
It could be. It all depends on the judge. I, I'll, I'll talk to the lawyer tomorrow if I can get ahold of him.
Yep.
Yeah, I got one of them, he called me on his personal cell phone afterwards, so. Him and Troy got into it a little bit and he called to apologize, but he didn't think the town should be treated like that.
Well, that it's an unfortunate thing, but-
It's very unfortunate, I consider Troy a friend of mine.
Me too.
But this is a business. I'm not gonna do, if I'm not gonna follow the ordinance, I gotta just run away.
Unfortunately, we're doing business with other people's money, so we have to be accountable to those people.
Exactly. We all have to, we all have to follow, we all have to pay the paper and we all have to follow the ordinances.
So you're just gonna follow up with Michelle and she can shoot us an, an email on what you-
Sure enough. I'll give the lawyer a deal as well, you can, somebody can collect them, Michelle can collect them.
Yep, either give us, give them a virtual one.
I need those anyways, just for-
Okay.
Anything I run across? If I need to move paperwork, you know?
I can almost tell from my head, top of my head, but not quite.
I think I have jobs, I'm not sure.
You do?
I do, okay.
Cool.
Same music now.
Okay, so everybody's satisfied with Lance's report, we'll move on. Okay, new business we've already addressed, item eight is town manager's report.
We don't have one.
That's correct. So our town manager's report is coming from our town clerk.
We, really, I mean, you've, we've been over everything earlier in this meeting, we went through everything last week. We're pretty much caught up.
We've, we're taking applications for Sam's position.
We have one so far. Um, deadline is the thirteenth.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be in the paper one more time. So they can either drop it off, email it, mail it to me, whatever, whatever they like to do. She, her last day in the office is the seventeenth, so we have about a week and a half.
Do we use, do we use the internet, um, you know, jobs.com type of thing?
We haven't, um, we do have it on our, on our website, we have it on Facebook, um. I don't know if it's on MMA, it was supposed to be on MMA's website. I need to go rev- revisit that on Friday.
And then we got one more newspaper.
One more newspaper.
I know a lot of the younger people use that. I used to use that, whatever it was, something, jobs.com or-
Yeah, I don't know how to do.
So as far as you as the clerk, um, where she's leaving, you've gotten through, you earned time off and stuff that you needed to get through? Your, your vacation?
No, I still, I still have time.
You still do?
Yeah.
But you're gonna be all set, you've done all the things you need to do before she leaves?
Yeah. Yeah, so I have Monday off, the ninth, but then I'm ready to-
Do it all?
Do it all.
Yeah. Okay.
So I've talked to various offices, the things that we have to do when she leaves, have to notify, like fish and game. Um, I need to become the agent for those different offices.
Now, you currently, are you, are you authorized to do those things or you have to?
Nope, I'm, I was that level before I left Guilford, so I talked to motor vehicle today, I'm truck level anyway. So I don't need extra training.
Okay, so you can do everything she can do?
I can do everything.
So you're, you're Sam plus?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-five years.
I didn't know if all the, you have to renew this stuff?
I do need to have training classes, but every office that I've talked to, I've got enough experience under me that they're satisfied.
We're not gonna be violating the law.
Nope.
And chances are the new hire will probably need those same classes.
Before they can become an agent of any kind, they have to take training through-
Their first, their first week or two would probably-
Oh, it's gonna be longer than that, it's not gonna be that fast.
So then they won't be active for-
Unless they come from the same job somewhere else.
Right. And depending on what level they're at, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, um, item nine.
How about the offer? Do you need to renew on that?
I actually got it, I emailed Monday night before I left to find out if she's gotten everything that she needs to have. Today, when I went into the office, um, into the email, there is an email that she needs more information. So I sent that to Sam for her to do tomorrow, make sure that she gets it done. And I'm going back to the office, so I'll, I'll print it off and make sure that's done. So they're still working on the checkbook?
Yeah, cause that's gonna be pretty important to come to budget time as well.
It is.
It's kind of important now, this is, this is really dragging out there.
Well, considering, when were they in the office? Jeff was still there, so it had to be March or April and we're still-
So is it just this much stuff to do or are we just this low priority or both?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both, because what happened was there were entries that weren't being made because the payments from the state, the state will send you an email and say, you've got a deposit of nineteen thousand five hundred for state revenue sharing. Well, Patrick, everything was going to town manager computer. So Patrick, not knowing what it is, was deleting it. So, and then you cannot balance the checkbook through Trio. Which, any auditor, anybody that I've ever dealt with, if you are budgeting and writing checks out of this system, you need to balance the checkbook through this system.
This system, yeah.
Has never been done. So they've been hand doing this, which I had been told in Guilford, do not do that. You do it through Trio. And there's no way to go back and try to pick up those documents and try to balance, it's too far gone. So what they're doing probably has taken a while. Because Sam couldn't get it quite right, things weren't being put in right, there were check fees that, I mean, the, it was, it's a mess. So hopefully, when we get started, they'll get me to point one and I'll be able to go from there.
Any other questions?
And really, I mean, realistically, every time you change people, you should have an honor to look at the books. So you've been, I've been through, I took one person's place, then Patrick and then Jeff. You should've had three or four audits looked at in that time span.
Yeah, it can get messy.
Yeah. So I think they're just being really thorough and making sure that everything is where it should be.
Yeah, they're there to help, they're there to try to get them bagged or something.
Okay, and move on to item, item nine. Road commissioner's report. In lieu for road commissioner, we, we'll talk to you, Josh.
Okay, uh, Chelsea Hershey's culvert. So in our culvert ordinance, we use a minimum of eighteen inch. So there's fifteen inch in there now, the two state ones below that are fifteen inch. We have a ledge problem. I don't think we're flowing fifteen inches worth of water down that short section of ditch.
No.
So I don't know if we need to do-
So basically, we're gonna make a variance to our culvert ordinance?
Right.
To, to go with a smaller culvert?
For this-
For the situation?
Right. I mean, I think a road commissioner could normally just- Right, I mean, I think a road commissioner could normally just make the decision to go with it, but. I figured I'd ought to bring it to you guys before.
Yeah, our culvert ordinance handwritten.
I guess I just make the combination that we drop it to a, on this, to a fifteen inch and.
Drop it to a twelve, right?
No, to, to a fifteen, because normally we have an eighteen, as our, our ordinance is eighteen, and we drop to fifteen so that it'll. Fit and it's not two feet above the road.
Right, and you gain a three inches.
I don't know that we need a motion for, just need to agree on that.
What's the length of it?
Uh, so our portion is twenty feet, but then they have an added twenty foot portion that was approved from. Five years ago, road commissioner, so they have a forty foot.
Forty foot culvert length?
Yeah.
And so this is her permit, once you guys decide what you're gonna do, then you have to sign it.
Okay, so we probably should make a motion that we're gonna drop it to a fifteen inch culvert due to the ledge. And move forward with changing the culvert and ditching the, ditching the rest of the front there, so it can work.
Second.
Yep, fifteen inch culvert it is.
That's the eighteen.
I thought you wanted to drive over it.
So we, we don't have to sign this until.
Until it's done.
Until it's done.
Um, but I don't know, like up in here, if you wanna make a note there or.
Make a note of what we decided and then just initial it or something.
I can do that if you want.
Yeah, just look at my.
Michelle, is that something we would put in her file in the CEO cabinet?
Yeah.
To try to keep those problems as thorough as possible, trees cut, anything. You got something to fall back on.
So while she's doing that, I've got quite a few things here.
Yep.
We have Beaver issues again on Norton Mills. Just as soon as you turn on a Norton Mills, everybody thinks it's Borough Road all the way through, but Borough Road really stops it. Norton Mills, Norton Mills goes all the way from Debbie Hill to Butch Lemiel say.
So that, that's that whole little.
Yes.
The back way to the Queues.
Yeah.
Right across from Brian's, Brian.
Yeah, as soon as you dip down in there, there's a bog there.
Yep.
This spring we had Beaver issues. I guess from talking to Michelle, Jeff had hired a company through USDA. Um, we paid upfront, but they still charge us every time they come out.
Paid him to harvest through the Beaver.
Yeah. So I don't know how I feel about that, I, I gotta call into the guy, hopefully I get a return phone call tomorrow.
I don't know, we use local trappers or something.
Well, the one we used over my way was out of North, Bryce or. Going to the Anderson Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and within a week we wiped that mess out.
When, when was that?
Hmm, a month ago. Jeff was still here, Jeff would be just.
So that must have been that bill you got?
It's gonna be.
That's another discussion I'm gonna have when we're gonna have itemized bills on. Cuz we just got a bill from him about, what was it, a hundred?
Hundred eighty-seven, yeah.
And there was no, it just says materials, personnel, something, then there's nothing on where. Anything was done, and I didn't know anything was done on that.
Did it say where it was from?
No, it doesn't state, I'll get it on my.
You said USDA.
This is. That was paid on the last warrant. You wanna, that's the bill.
I think between members of the town, they could probably take care of the problem street.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, we're dealing with the USDA directly.
This comes right back around the same conversation over and over, looking at the contracts that we have for the things that we do.
Correct, and I.
And I've got, I will make a note to see, cuz we talked about this and then I went to class, so USDA. Um, I'll see if I can find a contract in the office.
Can you write down for, you and I talk about the permit, revising the permit?
Sure.
And I, I don't think in years past, we've had that much of a Beaver issue.
So when I forget, you can remind.
So seventeen hundred dollars a year contract, and then we're getting a fee every time for him to come out.
Yeah, we need to.
I realize it's not much of a fee every time, but that, that's a lot of money when there's probably a certified tracker that can, that is allowed to, that's the hard part, there's a lot of trappers up there.
Someone contracted with them to.
Ben Nice's.
Jeff did.
Yeah, that's, that's the guy.
Ben Nice is his name.
Yeah.
USDA.
But just like I talked with Orkin once, and they want a contract, and you're gonna pay them every year, and they do something also.
But you can break that contract.
Yeah, well, I wonder if you can break this one?
I don't know.
Well, this is only a year long contract, so I mean, now that we've paid for our initials, so we might as well pay, see out this year, but.
We need to. The way I'm standing of it, it's, these guys from the state are the ones allowed to do that outside of normal trapping.
Outside of the season. So that, I, I don't know what it is now, but there used to be guys that were approved, they, they would trap normally, but they were also approved for nuisance. And that they could do many times, and it's not.
No, I don't do so, I think during, outside of, staying in a normal trapping season, these guys are the ones that have to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was like, December or whatever, you could say.
They have to be trapped, but is the only way they can be harvested, trapped?
He had, he has to check them every day, which he did, I, I mean, I actually assisted him with the whole thing, but there was five of them, got that. He's not a problem. You're happy with the way he did it? Oh, yeah. So this, this circles right back to the same thing we've, we've discussed on every topic. When we get down to doing our contracts, we really need to dig out the magnifying glass and. Really itemize these things so that we're not here wondering what's happening.
And I, and I'm, and maybe Jeff Libby had expressed to the last board when we signed this contract this spring, you know.
Mm-hmm.
This is how it's gonna be and this is what it is.
Right, and they knew.
We just don't know, I mean, we're, we're doing a lot of learning, you know.
But he was very good.
Yeah.
You know, very good at it.
Fixed the problem.
Oh, yeah.
Problem Beaver.
So is this problem, are they flooding the road now?
It's not flooded the road yet, um.
It's filling the culvert up.
Which has actually been down four or five times, just keep peeling the top of the culvert away, just to keep it flowing, but they're. They're pretty steadily keeping it halfway up the culvert, you know.
And there's not like screens or something we can put around the ends of the culverts to.
Oh, they're, they're, yeah, they make.
And this, actually, there was a screen on the end store at one time, which even, uh, he suggested, and there's another method as well, but.
Well, they make false culverts now that adapt onto your culvert.
That's right.
And they look at this culvert like this is the issue, and they plug and plug and plug, and this one is still flowing everything.
But allows you, you know, if there's gonna be cleanup, at least you can reach outside and that's going into that pipe, that pipe.
Problem Beaver, the iris comes, one waiting to take its place.
Right, I know we got two.
They have a hierarchy.
Yeah, we got two, and they left the traps in for a few days off Norton Mills this spring and never got any more, so they assumed it. There hadn't been a problem and all of a sudden it's back.
Mm-hmm.
But I also think they come right up off Black Stream.
They'll trash the miles along the land, and I suspect.
I know, set a date for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, state road, the drainage issue we discussed down here.
In front of the redemption center?
Last week, I talked to, um, Rob Therlott from up here to this, this garage. Um, at first, he really didn't want to even discuss it, was the vibe I got, but then as we. Talked into what I thought, he, I think he thought I was gonna be a little more aggressive about it, but, um. He gave me the number of John Vannalstein, I think is his last name, I have a call, he's the guy out of Bangor, the head, big wig, he said that he will come out. We can have a discussion, have a meeting. So I'm sure that's gonna have to take place during the day, so, I mean, I'll let you guys know when.
We'll be one of us.
If you can be there, you can be there, if not, I will at least schedule it to make sure I can be there. Um, I've been down, I've looked at it. I, I took Scott down with me tonight, and I don't think that putting a curb there is a, we're just gonna flood the road. It's not taking care of the problem, you know, and. The other, then the other thing is, is they roll a lot of dolly carts in and out of that place, little trucks that show up. It's not really right, the other thing is, is that's a handicap accessible.
Side walk.
Walkway.
Yeah.
You know, if we put a curb there, it's not handicap accessible anymore, and really, nobody should have to step over a curb on a walkway, it should be sloped.
Reality is, we need to fix the problem.
Correct. Then, um.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just soon as I hear from that, I'll let you guys know. The other thing is, uh, she had sent, well, no, it wasn't you, it was Sam, sent an email about Bob Pantsier, I don't know if you guys saw that? Talking about the limbs in the cemeteries.
Wouldn't you say it was one?
So he's, he's mostly talking about this one down here, the pine across the back. Um, I called him, he said that every cemetery has a few. I asked him what he thought it would cost, he, he couldn't give me a, he's like, probably a hundred to two hundred dollars per cemetery to get them cleaned up. From him, that's, he was willing to do it even though it's not his issue.
Just limbing?
Yeah, just limited taking care of limbs.
There we go, six cemeteries, seven, seven cemeteries.
Yeah. Um, he also expressed, which I think he's expressed to you, I don't know about you, but maybe Sam. There's a lot of mapping issues with the lots in the cemeteries, and we need to, that's not really. I, I wanted to get with you on it, cuz I wanted to know what is his exact job. I know what his title is, but what he, cuz he's supposed to technically just dig graves.
Certainly.
You know, that's, that, but he's having to go out, he just had to go out for my parents and find.
Yeah.
Make up new stuff for, on the Norton Mills Road one.
The mess.
Takes him quite a bit of time above and beyond, and, you know, he wasn't complaining, but he was saying, you know, that's something we should really.
He's very, he's very thorough, he does the same, same apartment, he's there six to do.
Yeah.
I have two lots down here strictly because we went to bury my father and there was someone in it.
And so.
And it happens, they're all messed up.
What happens, and this is a project I want to work on, on these cemeteries, cuz the mappings are disasters on. But Bob will come in and, we'll get a person come in, buy a couple lots, well, we gotta get ahold of Bob, he's gonna go out and he's gonna stick it. So he'll go out and he will try to find where the next person is. So I don't know how long it takes or what he uses for equipment.
Just a rod and.
Is it just a rod?
A rod and a hammer.
And he just.
Founding.
Yeah, goes over it until he can figure out, yeah, it's clear, we can put somebody in there, and no, you gotta pick a different lot.
Yeah, and he said this one down here, on the new side, the uphill side, they literally just used lag screws with a washer on them.
Yeah, there is no markings.
There's nothing stamped that says, there should be actual stamping, it's like, this is lot, you know, and south corner, north corners, you know.
Bob will get ahold of it and.
Right.
Moves going.
Yeah.
But on top of that, is you have the frost come and go, the ground will eat those. But they're metal, so you can take a metal detector to them, or I happened to go up with a knife and I was using the knife to try to find them. Once you find them, you just clean them off and we're able to figure out your dimensions. But this, from what I can understand, I've been down through this cemetery down here, I can't find any of those markers like he's talking about.
So Bob wanted to meet with me at some point and show me exactly what he's dealing with and, and. I mean, if he's going that far above and beyond his duties, he shouldn't be, in my mind, you know, he shouldn't have to go that far all the time to. So, and we probably do need to get some more maps lot, lots mapped out, but who do we pay to do that?
Not them, you, you gotta straighten out the maps you got, because there's some that are, are supposed to be like, like four in a row. And you've only got it logged out for three, you know, so you've got this other piece that's showing up in one place, but it's not showing up somewhere else.
And that's what I learned is, we were, we were doing the math a couple meetings ago, figuring six people per lot, and it's really four.
Right, and you're charging a hundred and seventy-five dollars, a hundred and fifty for the lot, twenty-five for registration at the deeds. But if you buy six, it's six hundred, well, you're losing three hundred dollars in revenue there.
So what I was told is, there's really not six, you're buying four, not six, then the math comes out right.
But that's not how they're doing it in the office, if the, if the lot is drawn in there on the map as six.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
We're eating up spaces.
Right.
You got an overlay.
Yeah, we gotta, it's gonna take some work, but.
So do we have to have a surveyor come in and do this, is this?
I don't know if you can, because you've gotta find all those caskets.
Can we ship them?
I mean, when Rick's wife died, they put her in the wrong slot, like a row back. And then they were gonna make him pay to move her where she belonged, so how many other cases?
But if we're thinking this, if we're thinking this six lots in one spot and there's really four.
Isn't that because of a new state?
Every single time, you're, you're getting further and further and further in the hole.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
More and more people are doing cremains because everything else is so expensive.
Right.
Which is great, cuz you can get anywhere from four to six cremains in a, in one lot.
So do we need for action on this?
Pipe.
We're gonna have to investigate what.
This, this, this conversation came from Bob Pantsier at the Sexton.
Yes, I, I had called him because he had mentioned about the, did he talk to you with Sam? I can't remember, one of you sent an email out about the limbs.
Sammy, I think, she deals with him more than I do.
Then when I was on the phone, he said, well, why we're at it, why don't we have a discussion, you know?
So for further action, we ought to talk to Bob, he may have good information on what we need to do and where we need to go with this.
Have him come in, talk to the board?
Right.
Okay.
And do we have, the other part of this is, what do we have for a budget for the cemeteries? Do we just have the mowing and, I mean, do we have money to send him out there and let him do at least the trimming? Cuz I, I mean, you could see it from driving down Main Street here, that them limbs are hanging long, I mean, by rights, we probably should clean them out.
I think it's also Virgion mowing.
I think it is too.
Cause I did a little time.
The one down here for the backside is in trouble. It's seventy-five feet, you can only trim a third of the tree.
There we go, Mr. Code Enforcement.
Yeah, we just won't talk to code enforcement one way or the other. Make sure he's gone on vacation that day.
Yeah, all you have in there is you have thirty-five hundred dollars for the Sexton. Um, eighteen hundred dollars for cemetery repair, so like stones or whatever, and then you have thirteen thousand for mowing. You don't have anything else built in there for anything.
Maybe this will be, put in a box set for the mower, but trimming the hall.
Right, but then we're gonna have the budget to do that, you know.
And does, does the term follow the maintenance?
What does the town repair, the, the stones are private, you know?
Um, they, no, once they're, once they're set.
There's no problem.
You have to, if, yeah, stone tips over, it's up to the town to put it back in place and, and fix it.
So that's what that thirty-five hundred dollars is for?
No, that's.
That's eighteen.
Eighteen hundred, okay.
So have we spent any of that eighteen hundred?
No.
Cuz you could count limbing as.
Repair.
Repair.
It's maintenance and repair.
Right, road repair.
What was the total that Bob thought he'd be if he, if he did it?
He thought a hundred, two hundred bucks per.
I lied, you have thirteen hundred dollars left, you spent four hundred and thirty-six dollars on something.
Which is about what it would cost to limo, is that all we're doing for maintenance before the, before the next budget cycle?
Maybe we should bring Bob in.
Yeah.
Try to bring him in the meeting after next, have that, have that question for him.
Yep.
I'll forget it by then.
Okay.
Even if I write it down, so.
I'll give him the follow up.
Other than that, I.
That's your complete report?
Yeah.
It's been half a late as week for you to get your stuff out of the way.
Well, Jeff keeps saying, hey, if you wanna handle that, it sounds like road, if you wanna handle that, it sounds like road, something. I figured there was a road going through the cemetery, it probably sounds like road.
Don't be afraid to throw it back.
Hey, could we use the road budget for that?
We ain't got enough of that.
So moving on, item ten is, is any other select board concerns, I think we've pretty much. In my mind, we've nailed it all down for the night. You guys have any other concerns?
I'm good.
Oh, uh, memory lane, that wasn't in there.
It wasn't, alright.
Oh, the other thing is. Do we need stop signs at the end of memory lane and at the end of knotty bines? We have stop signs, them are technically private roads, aren't they?
They're private roads.
Those are dead ends, aren't they? Yeah, 'cause memory lane goes to a latest camp in their, in their parking lot. And.
That's like technically the driveway, but because of its certain length, it has to be labeled as a road.
Yeah.
None of our camp roads have stop signs.
I'm good with it then, it was just, it was a question that was brought to me.
We do need a stop sign at Honeywell Avenue.
That will get repaired, that's on, on the list.
Good. All right, no other concerns? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Sorry, second.
And vote, and that we're adjourned.